I call this Altoona City Council Meeting to Order Monday, August 12th at 6:00 PM. We'll now have a moment of silent prayer. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic religious hands, one nation in America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Linda, would you take the rule call, please?
Councilman Beatty?
Here.
Councilman Butterbaugh?
Here.
Councilwoman Clinitch?
Here.
Councilman Ellis?
Here.
Councilman Ickes?
Here.
Councilman Kelly is absent. Mayor Pacifico?
Here. Uh, our first item on the agenda is a finance update from our finance director, Jim Garrett. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, in front of you, I have provided you with a, uh, six-month breakdown of the current city's budget and where we actually reside. Uh, you will see, um, the third column over is the 2024 budget number and the three columns after that, the percentage of the budget used. Uh, anything that's 50% or higher in revenue is good. Anything in the expenditures, 50% or lower is, uh, good there. I just want to give you a few updates. Uh, you'll see that in the general property taxes, that, um, our percentage from this year versus last year at this time is a little lower, but we actually collected a little more money because of the increase in real estate taxes. Um, the, um, next area I wanted to hit on was the earned income taxes. The earned income taxes look like it's low, but that is actually has a two-month delay. Uh, it takes from the time it gets collected at Blair County Tax Collection to get to us. It's two months, so, uh, that is a little bit behind. Um, the payment for, or charges for services, another one that, uh, looks a little out of place, but we actually have a large payment that comes in for that, uh, at the end of the year. So, right now, it's, it's actually in line. There's nothing to worry about it. Interest income, uh, we are, uh, we met with the banks and got increases in our interest rates on the money that we had. Um, so we are earning a lot better interest now and, um, doing very well in that account. The, uh, intergovernmental revenues for the state, again, that's another one that comes in, uh, late September, early October. Usually that's your state aid. Um, again, nothing to be, uh, concerned about at this time. So, going down to the expenditure line, um, most of the expenditures are in very good shape. Uh, some of the numbers are a little less than where we were last year, particularly police and fire are down a lot more than what, um, they were last year. Some of this could be, um, lack of staffing. I know the police, um, are always seem to be getting new people, losing people. I'm not sure exactly what the staffing, um, levels are in the fire department, but, um, and it could be also, they might have larger expenditures towards the end of the year. I still looking into that. Um, the three items at the bottom, again, if you look at it, we've spent 7% in one category, 4% in another, and a little under 10 in the, in the last one. Those are, again, three accounts that the majority of the money gets spent in the last quarter of the year. So, um, nothing to really be, um, up in arms about. Uh, but if you do compare your revenue numbers to your expenditure numbers, you'll see the excess, uh, of revenue that's actually at the bottom. So, at this point in time, it looks like the city's doing very well, but remember, there are a lot more expenditures that come in between now and the end of the year. Plus, the way we do our audit, we actually capture expenditures in January and February that are related to 2024. So, we actually have eight more months of spending money that goes into this report. So, I don't want you to think, wow, we got a ton of money here and we're doing really well. That, that money will, you know, because this is, this report is a cash basis report, so. You're welcome.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody have any questions, comments?
Jim, I really appreciate, um, you, when you and I had a conversation several months ago about working with the banks to get, uh, higher, higher interest income, given the fact we were, at the time, in a higher, uh, interest rate environment. So, anything we can do to make some guaranteed money while those rates are good is much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, uh, we had executive sessions after the last council meeting and work session. Uh, both were for real estate personnel and potential litigation. Uh, with that, we will open the floor for public comment. If anybody would like to address council, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to under five minutes.
Uh, my name's Mike Sorello. I reside at 3021 Spruce Avenue, and I have done for 28 years. Are we on time? Or do you let me know when to start time? You're good? Okay. Basically, guys, I stand here not only as a voice, excuse me, I don't have my glasses on, a voice for myself, but also as a representative for all the residents along this very small stretch of roadway. You stole something from us, and now we want it back. Legal protection in the means of an engine brake ordinance is necessary to this roadway. There are hundreds of them across this Commonwealth. They are being easily enforced by single police in small towns. Your unenforceable rhetoric is just plain wrong. The only way it's not enforceable is that you're a deaf or born without ears. The reason I have been in this ridiculous fight with the city council is I'm a proud truck driver. I am a 17-year veteran truck driver with over 1.5 million miles under my belt. Dave, you're excluded from all of this. You know that. I have also, sorry, this is my PTSD. Uh, I also have worked as a heavy truck mechanic for the last seven years, both managing and being head mechanic for almost two years. I have exceptional knowledge of all the workings related to heavy trucks and equipment. I've done both state and federal inspections on trucks and trailers. This council is ill-informed and ignorant with regards to engine braking and also relaying false information. Simply put, I know what I'm talking about. You don't. An engine brake, guys, is not a safety device. It never was and never will. It is supplemental braking. That's all it'll ever be, and I'm gonna give you an example. Safety devices are orange triangles, road flares, blinking lights. That's, that's safety devices. A loaded truck on a steep grade that loses all braking will no longer be able to be slowed by the engine brake. It could, sorry, it continues to pick up speed. A safety device would bring the truck to a stop. It, it won't. It won't. An engine brake will not. If it was an emergency device, it'd bring that vehicle to a stop. You pop the valves and you set your spring brakes. Mr. Ickes, your, your argument was just ridiculous. DOT approved. Look at your car. Your taillights are DOT approved. Your headlights are DOT approved. Your glasses DOT approved. Not an engine brake. So anyways, guys, uh, this is all rhetorical. This isn't an argument, okay? Did you personally talk to the residents of this neighborhood to see what negative effects to the health and peace of us would be? No. I'll answer it for you. How many citations has the city police issued in the last three years? Answer? I'll answer that for you, too. None. Are you aware that you have violated the Constitution of the United States? Guys. Are you aware that you're, uh, you have violated the Constitution of the United States guarantees of peace and tranquility for all Americans? Are you aware that millions of veterans who serve this country fought for protection of this basic human right? These are homes. These aren't houses. These are homes. We live, we die, we breathe, we get sick, we hurt. I'm actually gonna skip over a lot of this, 'cause I just wanna keep on moving through here, but there are hun- yeah, when you guys are doing this stuff and you're running them jakes by my house, you're also doing it to three veterans. One is my friend behind my house, and he has PTSD. So guess what he gets every fucking time you guys do this? I told you not to bring me out. Here it is, gentlemen. I got a petition for you. I made a copy for you. You can make your own damn ones if you need more than one. You will see it. There were 31 people on that area, and I didn't even have to. The one guy snatched out when he started reading it. He's like, hell, yeah. I didn't know how many people were affected by this. I didn't know until I went out. I'm a protector of people. We're not judged by who we are as men, and the way you guys react is just pathetic. I mean, it is just pathetic. So basically, guys, right here, I even have it. I begged you to take care of this all behind the scenes, so no one's names got muddied up. You took my kindness and my silence for weakness, and you were, that's a big mistake. And now there will be consequences well beyond the engine brake. Nothing we can do is over here, guys. I don't wanna ever hear that word again. Do the right thing. It was so easy. It was so easy. I had this handled in three weeks. Three freaking weeks. Word gets out, they stop running them. Easy. But no, couldn't do it. Do the right thing, guys. We have to do better. You destroyed, you, you gotta do better. You had your chance to do better, and instead you helped destroy a fellow man's mental state. Personally responsible. Dave, you're not in this. Personally responsible, guys. And they're, they're gonna see, they're gonna see what you were hoping I'd be quiet about, 'cause that medication you guys drove me to took away that inhibition and fear. I fear no man, nobody, not one single one of you. All you are is equals right in front of me, and that in God we trust. He's on the side of the podium, guys. So, long story short is, uh, a wise man named Alice Cooper once said, welcome to my nightmare. Why don't you come on in? You will take care of these veterans, and I am calling on all veterans to please stand up for them and post on Facebook as soon as the page is up. Address will be on my fence. I'm giving it to the Altoona Mayor and WTAJ. You can feel free to call the mayor's office and tell him what other, you know, about him and his council what they think.
Thank you, Mr. Sorello.
I'm not done. I'm not done.
Your five minutes is up, sir.
Well, you know what, guys? I'm gonna tell you this, then. I'll speak out loud. Every one of you guys that did this to me, you know what you can do? Up to it! Down this thing! Fuck idiots! Here's your fucking petition. Piss off, bunch of cunts. I warned you not to bring me up. I warned you.
Anybody else for public comment?
Um, my name's Becky Geiner, 1200 Adams Avenue, Pleasant Valley area. I know you guys know who we, who we are. Um, Gary's here, too, from our neighborhood. We got a little bit nervous when we saw Bill's article in the Altoona Mirror, um, August 3rd about, you know, these contracts have to, or these projects have to be under contract by the end of this year. Is that correct? And then completed by the end of next? And some of them have to be scrapped and whatever, and I guess, you know, I mean, we haven't really had anything done. We, we flooded in June of 2021. Few more times since then, we've got water in our basements, not ever as bad as the June 21. There's been some talk about the stream cleanup, and we, like, we're just wondering where we're at. I don't see Nate here today. I don't know. Oh, there he is. Hi, Nate. Sorry. And you're not in, you're not the Public Works guy anymore, right? Or somebody else?
Well, not.
Oh, Rob. Anyway.
Rob's debating on whether he wants to admit he's Public Works right now.
Anybody tell us anything as far as what we can expect. I mean, you know, there was even talk of FEMA buying our houses. We don't wanna do anything to our property, put a new roof on, blah, 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 if we're gonna be bought out. And, you know, I don't know that that's ever gonna happen, but anyway, if, if there's anything that we can be told, we, we're told we'd get a letter way back when, and we never did. So.
So, we just actually had a meeting not too long ago with our engineer, and the projects that we have on the books for right now, there is a time reserved, and I had talked to these folks about, we're probably gonna need a meeting at the end of '24 to get some of these contracts. Yours, 12th Street is still on the list.
Okay.
To get, to get the pipes repaired coming down.
15 million stormwater, is that part, are we part of that?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you still are. I mean, the nuisance pipe that's coming down 12th Street, I, I think we've, you know, I, I've been straight up and honest with you guys from the start. I mean, to, to, to take care of the issue is just, the entire issue, it's just so large that we'll never get to there. But as far as, I think where we've kind of resigned ourselves to is that we're still trying to get rid of some of the nuisance issues where the water's coming down, and it goes down in pipe size, so that's, 12th Street's still on the list for this year to get done yet, or get under a contract by the end of the year.
So, you think the pipe is gonna be part of the solution to our problem?
I think it's gonna help. It's not gonna hurt. It's not gonna fix, you know, everything. We've been in contact with some of the, um, our representative's office. There's some toolkit ideas that the mayor and I had been sort of involved with. She had indicated that she was also going to, uh, reach back out to FEMA and FEMA and see if there were any additional resources, but.
And, and there were some things that we identified when we were down there doing the cleanups with Jordan of areas where we could get in there and do some additional cleanouts and clearing and stuff like that where we're permitted to. So, so that's also something that we have on the list as well.
All right. And I really wanted to tell you guys thank you. Every time I called, you've got back to us. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, if there is no more public comment, we, oh, okay, go ahead, sir.
Evening. Uh, name's Kerry Eichelberger. Reside at 2111 11th Street, and, um, I've had problems with, um, on the weekends, especially weekend nights, with, uh, recreational burning, fumes from fires coming into my, uh, house, um, and then wacketing the neighborhood. Other neighborhoods I've noticed also, uh, seem to have, uh, affected by, uh, people burning recreationally on the weekends and evenings. And I would like to see maybe the city institute a ban on recreational burning. I know there's currently, fire codes require certain distances from structures and, uh, ready means of extinguishing fires, but, um, or, uh, certain containers for burning them, but, uh, I think just doing an outright ban and, uh, dispelling without, uh, trying to regulate distances and so forth would, um, be a better approach. And I would like, think, uh, doing this would, uh, increase the desirability of living in the city of Altoona. Thank you much.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Are you talking about fire rings?
Yes, or just, uh, yeah, open fires. Yes.
Okay, so they're not burning, they're burning wood?
Burning wood, yeah. Yeah, it's not, it's not like they're burning, like, trash or anything like that. It's always after dark.
Okay, so like campfire type thing?
Campfire type of things, you know, you know, they don't stand, I'm, I'm, I'm downwind. They're always, they're always upwind.
Okay.
You know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any more public comment? Okay. Oh, all right.
Uh, Alan Fulmer, uh, 1316 Adams Avenue, and, uh, I'm one of the residents that's involved in the flood issues down there. And just a question, is there a website or a page somewhere we can go to view and get any information on any future plans that are happening in that valley pertaining to the flooding?
We don't really have a page or projects attached to it. I mean, we've done some flood studies that, you know, we, 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 we did, I think, two years ago.
Is any of that public knowledge?
There's no master plan. Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure. We can get you a copy of it. It's just very difficult to, you know, di- digest, I guess.
Very difficult?
See, it's, it's, it's difficult to digest, 'cause it's kind of like in engineering terms, but, um, yeah, we could, we could look at sort of making that available. But yeah, it's, I mean, it's common. I mean, the government's paid for it, so.
Okay, how do you get that information?
Well, you're asking, uh, we just haven't really thought about it yet, but, um, if you just give me your name and number, or, you know, afterwards here, we can see what we can do for you.
Okay.
It's just, it's about this thick with what, you know, what we had done to date.
I'll buy the paper.
Yeah, it's not a big deal.
So, so you're asking for like the ARPA projects list, like, to date? Is that?
Well, I think, I think, uh, everybody that lives in that valley, there's people there that would be interested in staying up, updated. Uh, I don't know what the word is I wanna use, but, uh, have a little bit of information. You know, we have, we have residents that come in here and ask, what are you doing? Well, if there was a place we could see that, you know, we would, we would know, we'd have better information, I, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
I think the more appropriate response is kind of like what we've done to get to where we are right now, and then summarize that.
Well, I still get four feet of water at my basement door. Last year, it looked like the Titanic, so.
Yeah, I get it.
You know, I appreciate what you've done to get where we are, but we're still being flooded. And believe me, I understand there's a lot of other people in this community that get water probably worse than I do.
But.
Uh, that's, that's not my question. My question is, where do we see that information to stay up to date on it?
Yeah.
I don't even wanna get into the whole flood thing. It, I don't wanna do that.
If you give me your name and.
Yeah.
Number, we can.
Okay.
We have it readily available.
All right.
All right.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll close the floor and move on to the resolutions now.
Item A is approving the minutes of the Altoona City Council Meeting held Monday, July 8th, 2024. Item B is awarding the fire station, fire station garage door replacement project to Clark Contractors of Bedford in the amount of $126,670.96, with $57,738 payable from Commonwealth of Pennsylvania fiscal year 2023-24 municipal fire department capital grant, and $68,932.96 payable from ARPA funds, and further authorizing the interim city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item C is authorizing a lease agreement attached here, too, between the city and East End Baseball League for the East End Ball Field, and further authorizing the interim city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item D is awarding the slip lining of pipes on Logan Boulevard from Plank Road to Arlard Street, and on North 3rd Street from North 9th Avenue to North 11th Avenue, to Guire Brothers of Salemville Road New Enterprise in the amount of $270,623 payable from ARPA funds, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item E is authorizing participation in the federal special bridge funds inventory and inspection program administered by the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, and further authorizing the interim city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item F is awarding a demolition bid for 1914 11th Street Earth Movers Unlimited of Kyler Town in the amount of $12,773 payable from the 2023 lighted property program, and further authorizing the interim city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Now, items G through R are all easement agreements, and they're all for the project number 0161-23-441, and they're between the city of Altoona, and I will name the person and the address, and they are all further authorizing the interim city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. G is Ronald Mallory, and these are all for maintenance of stormwater facilities, 1724 North 5th Avenue. H is Tony Hall LLC for property at 1731 North 4th Avenue. I is, where's the name? Logan Township for property located at 815 North 7th Avenue. J is Richard McFree's, Mcfee Senior for property located at 800 North 8th Avenue. K is Richard Mcfee Senior for property located at 801 North 8th Avenue. L is Jason A. Miller and Robert E. Miller for property located at 1717 North 6th Avenue. M is for Jeffrey L. Putt and Sandra A. Putt for property located at 1725 North 5th Avenue. N is John M. Davis for property located at 1712 North 5th Avenue. O is for Louis A. Nardelli and Linda A. Nardelli for property located at 801 North 7th Avenue. P is for Carol Basil for property located at 1103 58th Street. Q is for Stephen C. and Joanne D. Bennett for property located at 602 East Park Avenue. R is Casey M. Mayberry for property located at 1717, I'm sorry, 717 North 8th Avenue. S, excuse me, we'll stop right there. That's all of the easement agreements. Then we have, um, item S, which is approving a repository bid in the amount of $100 submitted by Randy Folkler of 1918 5th Avenue for property located at 417 South 8th Street, and further authorizing the interim city manager, and it's in the amount of $100, and further authorizing the interim city manager to execute the taxing district form. Item T is approving a repository bid in the amount of $400 submitted by George Adams of 308 Maple Avenue for property located at 306 Maple Avenue, and further authorizing the interim city manager to execute the taxing district form. Item U is approving a repository bid in the amount of $100 submitted by VAP Investments of Elizabeth, New Jersey for property located at 1513 to 15 North 6th Avenue. Item V is approving a repository bid in the amount of $300 submitted by B's Boss Investments of Philadelphia, PA for property located at 1009 18th Avenue in the amount of $300 for property located at 2609 Maple Avenue in the amount of $300 for property located at 1108 17th Avenue in the amount of $300 for property located at 1110 17th Avenue, and further authorizing the interim city manager to execute the taxing district forms. Item W is approving a repository bid in the amount of $750 submitted by Richard Leach of Hollywood, Florida for property located at 1216 17th Avenue, $750 for property located in 1900 to 02 10th Street, in the amount of $750 for property located at 3318 6th Avenue, and further authorizing the interim city manager to execute the taxing district forms. Item X is approving repository bids in the amount of $600 submitted by Michael Nichols of New York, New York for property located at 12th Avenue, in the amount of $600 for property located at 1810 12th Avenue, in the amount of $600 for property located at 1404 18th Street, in the amount of $600 for property located at 208 East Cherry Avenue, in the amount of $600 for property located at 1823 13th Avenue, and further authorizing the interim city manager to execute the taxing district forms. Item Y is approving a repository bids in the amount of $600 submitted by Sheila Del Santos of Philadelphia for property located at 1509 1st Avenue, in the amount of $600 for property located at 1618 11th Street, in the amount of $600 for property located at 1902 10th Street, in the amount of $600 for property located at 1920 15th Avenue, and in the amount of $600 for property located at 2409 Oak Avenue, and further authorizing the interim city manager to execute the taxing district form. Are there any deletions or any items that need to be pulled for separate vote?
Uh, I'd like to pull, uh, U through Y, please.
Okay.
And while you're noting that, hey, th- those easements, like, are they already signed? Like, are we good with the agreements with the property owners? Sweet. Good work. Good job.
Okay, I'm gonna call for the consent vote.
Hold on, David. What, which ones did you call for separate vote?
U through Y.
But let's add S to that, too.
So, Councilman Beatty is saying add S. And that is the, uh, 417 South 8th Street property.
All right, I'm gonna call for the. All right, I'm gonna call for the consent vote first on items A through. I think it's T. Actually, A through R and T. A through R and T, this is a consent vote. Councilman Beatty.
Yes.
Councilman Butterball.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clinage.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Yes.
Councilman Ickes.
Yes.
Councilman Kelly is absent, Mayor Pacifico.
Yes.
And the consent vote passes six to zero. And then individually, we will do item S first. It's approving a repository bid in the amount of one hundred dollars submitted by Randy Folkler of nineteen eighteen Fifth Avenue for property located at four seventeen South Eighth Street and further authorizing the interim city manager to execute the taxing district form. Councilman Beatty.
No.
Councilman Butterball.
No.
Councilwoman Clinage.
No.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
No.
Councilman Ickes.
No.
Councilman Kelly is absent, Mayor Pacifico.
No.
And the vote does not pass. And then we have item U, which is approving a repository bid in the amount of one hundred dollars submitted by VAP Investments for property located at fifteen thirteen to fifteen North Sixth Avenue and further authorizing the interim city manager to execute the taxing district form. Councilman Beatty.
No.
Councilman Butterball.
No.
Councilwoman Clinage.
No.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
No.
Councilman Ickes.
No.
Councilman Kelly is absent, Mayor Pacifico.
No.
And the vote does not pass. Then we have item V, which is approving repository bids, and they're all in the, each of them are in the amount of three hundred dollars by Biz Bass, Biz Boss Investments of Philadelphia. The first one is for one thousand nine eighteenth Avenue, twenty-six oh nine Maple Avenue, eleven oh eight seventeenth Avenue, eleven ten seventeenth Avenue, and all are further authorizing the interim city manager to execute the tax taxing district forms. Councilman Beatty.
No.
Councilman Butterball.
No.
Councilwoman Clinage.
No.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
No.
Councilman Ickes.
No.
Councilman Kelly is absent, Mayor Pacifico.
No.
And the vote does not pass. And we have item W, which is, they are all seven, each of them are seven hundred and fifty dollars, and they're approving repository bids submitted by Richard Leach of Hollywood, Florida. The first property is twelve sixteen seventeenth Avenue, nineteen hundred to oh two Tenth Street, thirty-three eighteen Sixth Avenue, and further authorizing the interim city manager to execute the taxing district forms. Councilman Beatty.
No.
Councilman Butterball.
No.
Councilwoman Clinage.
No.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
No.
Councilman Ickes.
No.
Councilman Kelly is absent, Mayor Pacifico.
No.
And the vote does not pass zero to six. Then we have X, which is, these are all each six hundred dollar properties and it's approving repository bids, and they're submitted by Michael Nickel Nicholas of New York, New York. And the first property is Twelfth Avenue. There's eighteen ten Twelfth Avenue. There is fourteen oh four Eighteenth Street, two oh eight East Cherry Avenue, and eighteen twenty-three Thirteenth Avenue, and further authorizing the interim city manager to execute the taxing district form. Councilman Beatty.
No.
Councilman Butterball.
No.
Councilwoman Clinage.
No.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
No.
Councilman Ickes.
No.
Councilman Kelly is absent. Mayor Pacifico.
No.
And the vote does not pass. And we have Y. And these are each six hundred dollars for each property, and this is approving repository bids submitted by Celia Del Santos of Philadelphia for properties. The addresses are fifteen oh nine First Avenue, sixteen eighteen eleventh Street, nineteen oh two Tenth Street, nineteen twenty Fifth Avenue, and twenty-four oh nine Oak Avenue, and further authorizing the interim city manager to execute the taxing district forms. Councilwoman Beatty.
No.
Councilman Butterball.
No.
Councilwoman Clinage.
No.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
No.
Councilman Ickes.
No.
Councilman Kelly is absent, Mayor Pacifico.
No.
And the vote does not pass. We have, we have one ordinance for introduction. It's an ordinance of the city of Altoona Blair County, which authorizes the vacation and abandonment of fifteen foot of unopened alley between Thirty-Eighth Street and Ruskin Drive adjacent to Blair County Tax Parcel zero one dot fourteen dash twenty-seven oh eight oh pursuant to chapter two ninety-five dash eight of the Altoona City Code, and further authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a quitclaim deed to Gold Design, Gold Zen Real Estate and any accompanying documentation to relinquish any right title and or interest the city of Altoona has or may have in said unopened alley, provide severability of provisions, repeal her, and provide an effective date. Is there a council member willing to introduce this ordinance?
Sir, may.
This ordinance will be introduced by Councilman Butterball.
All right, uh city manager updates, Nate.
Thanks, Mayor. I really don't have that many updates, but prospect poll, Sunday was the last day of the season for the poll. So our plan would be, I think we had a really good summer. It was a warm summer, so we should have plenty of attendance data up till date. This week was a little chilly, so uh I don't think this past weekend was super. Our plan would be to get with the YMCA, get some stuff together for you all for the September work session to sort of look at the future there with that. And then I looked on the schedule, we have the Labor Day Parade coming up, August thirty-first, ten to eleven downtown, and then the car cruising and car show, same day, two thirty to eight o'clock on Eleventh Avenue.
Thank you. Is that all you had? Is that it? Okay. Uh council discussion items, Councilman Ickes.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to comment, I know there was an article in the paper over the weekend about Secretary Seiger being here last week with DCD. Definitely a unique opportunity to have the, the, the opportunity to engage with the Secretary of DCD while in town and to showcase some of the, the good things that have taken place over the last decade or so in downtown Altoona. We have a, a lot more work to do. I'm focused and interested on this comp plan being executed. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to partner with some of those, those programs that the secretary outlined. So thanks to uh staff and all of the other members of council who were able to participate that day. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Butterball.
Uh nothing here, thank you.
Councilman Ellis.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilman Beatty.
Having attended that with Secretary Seiger, um he really did take, seem to take an interest in what we're doing down there. And um there's a lot of development going on, but there's still a few buildings that need some significant work. And, you know, working with the state to get the funds to do those type of projects are, are important. So that was a good, good thing for Altoona.
Councilwoman Clinage.
I just wanted to thank the Altoona Police Department for the national night out. It was a nice event, I attended it, and even though the rain came before, there were still good attendance. And I know the children enjoy it, so thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the media?
Thanks. Any particular comment on Mr. Savello's presentation? Okay. Um he had called me earlier, um several days ago, and he said a few things I want to know if you want to comment on. He, he said, he, he suspected that the Jake Brake ordinance was rescinded as a favor to cronies of council. Any thoughts on that? He also said, well, he said here, um I'll ask you this specifically, that it's not a safety device. Any, maybe Mike has a thought on that, whether in fact it is a safety device based on Transportation Department uh regulations, I guess, or not, as he claims. Yeah, yeah. Okay. And then um, and then Joe, I guess, he said no, nobody was ever cited under that Jake Brake ordinance. Is that correct? Correct, okay, can you say why that's correct, why that?
I think we've talked this to death over the last three years. My predecessor was against this ordinance when it first came up. We've been pretty consistent, I mean, probably pull all the quotes from your previous articles.
I don't, I don't really remember, was it because it was sort of unenforceable? Because you couldn't get there in time to hear something or?
It was a combination of um resource allocation being used for, you know, things that actually cause accidents and um that it.
You mean things that prevent accidents?
Well, no, like if we have time and resources to do traffic enforcement, we're going to focus on speeding, stops on violations, aggressive driving, not things that slow down vehicles. I'll let you Google NHTSA and see if it's a safety device or not, but um that is also in the, one of the reasons why.
Right, okay. Um any, Nate, could you explain again the, um what's happening with the flooding in the valley? Like, I know there was a study, like what was the, the gist of, like in briefly, the gist of that study or its findings?
Well, we, we first had our ARPA fundings, we had those listening sessions, and one of the things that came up really in the, I think the twenty-one flood was kind of the epicenter of what had happened over there. So council had allocated some money to do a flood, flood study that looked at the twenty-five year flood, the fifty year flood, the hundred year flood, just to see if any of the projects that we originally sort of like pie in the sky, hey, what if we stick this here, what if we stick this here, what if we take a bridge out? What if we, you know, make some real changes in the topography over there? Does anything really move the needle enough? And, and really, the study came back and said it didn't really matter. What we did is far as anything online or right outside, is it related to like a retention basin or somewhere to like sort of hold the water until it comes down through there? It just, it is just overdeveloped and, you know, the um, the solution really was the, a large uh area of a, a stream bank that was about the size of the Sixteenth Street Bridge. So when you took that up through the valley, it seemed to work on paper. But then, as we got through the process and we got involved with the EP and the Army Corps of Engineers, uh there were exceptional value wetlands downstream, some number of miles, which kicked it into like a, I think it was an individual permit or a joint permit, became a meandering, meandering stream. And the, the cost of that particular project, I think, ballooned to somewhere in the neighborhood of forty to fifty million dollars. So that was really the crux of the study.
And it was gonna take seven years to get all the permitting required as well.
So, so that's sort of, you know, that's sort of where the end of the study was, that any of the low hanging fruit that we thought we could have put in as it related to the ARPA funding was really, you know, inconsec, inconsequential, if you will.
I, I followed everything I thought, except that, did you say that that proposal that would have been like fifty million dollars, like out of, out of range of reality, involved a, 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 a big detention pond?
No, it was, when we were looking at the detention ponds, like we had looked at one at various locations up through there, it really didn't move the needle. Was it related to the hundred year flood, which was the flood that real, it was actually more than a hundred year flood. It was probably like a five hundred year flood, which was the, the twenty-one flood, I believe. That was in ju, June or July that year, was that right? So it didn't matter, like we could have spent two, three, four, five, six million dollars on retention basins up through there, and it really wouldn't have even really moved the needle.
But so, but what was the main thing? I, I guess, I guess, and I didn't catch, what, what the main thrust of that fifty million dollar project would have been? Like, what would it have?
Oh, it was just really tearing out the entire valley and putting in a meandering stream that went.
Oh, you mean like tearing out the houses?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, like, like buying them, like, like happened on Kentucky Avenue?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
But then redoing a stream, so it meandered all through there. Cause they don't like straight stretches, they like meandering streams.
Okay.
Cause of the permits that were required.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I, I guess this is for you too, Nate, or Rob. What, what is the, the maintenance of storm facility easement purpose? Or purposes for all those easements for the maintenance of a storm facility?
So those are those intake projects we talked about last time, that's out for bid now. So that it's uh head walls and wing walls uh of small streams, and also some rock armoring uh with laying back just to protect the, protect our roads where small streams enter pipes.
So these, these are like all over the place?
Yeah, I think there's nine locations throughout the city.
Oh, okay, okay. And then uh, Ron, why did you propose to vote no on the local, the one local depository that you voted no, that you, everybody voted no on? S, I think it was S.
I, I can't comment on that one, but I, I really think that, you know, we're trying to watch out for the city interest.
Okay. And then um was the ordinance introduction, was that on behalf of the Donut Shop approval? Or the Donut Shop proposal, I mean?
Yes.
Yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Meeting is adjourned.